Dave.
Yeah.
I am not able to screen share that zoning map from the website. Do you have it as like a Word document or something in your file?
I do. Am I going to be able to share screen still, or is that not going to work either?
Yes. No, you can do that.
I'll have it up on my screen then.
Perfect. Thank you. Come on. Did anybody go to the service yesterday, the Dawn Service?
Yeah.
There was a nice article in the paper about it today.
I celebrated Passover.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Did you get everything cleared off the table?
I know what you're saying. Yeah, it's interesting because my dining room table is my office now, so we had to make some accommodations.
Okay, Linda, I see something in the chat here from Jamal. I think he needs access.
Yeah, I'll need to wait until I'm finished on Facebook.
Okay.
When I'm in, when I'm in Facebook loading the meeting, I can't do anything else or I lose it.
Okay. All right, there's Ramani.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi. I'm not going to screen share, but out of my front window, we have a cherry tree in the front yard, and right now it's just this beautiful pink puff. It's like light pink and just really beautiful. So it's the equivalent of what Marcia has behind her.
I love Doug Fisher and his commitment to those trees going up there.
And what a shame we never follow through with the festival wanted. I mean, thank goodness trees are there. It's like John, when he planted all his trees, they're coming to blossom now, but it was never followed up with what Doug's intent was, was to make that a celebration of Reading and the Riverfront. So hopefully at some point that will occur.
Yeah, we need to be able to use the river that way. But it contrasts so beautifully with the new bridge, the whiteness of the new bridge with the pink of the trees.
Okay. Who else are we expecting from the administration? I see Frank's here. Hey, Frank. Hi. Will Abe be joining us?
He will be late.
So at this point, are we waiting for anybody else?
There we go.
No? All right.
Almost there.
I just want to mention Abe will join us in a little bit. He does have a call with the state today, the Commonwealth, in regards to the vaccinations. And unfortunately, the call has to be at 5:00. So as soon as he's finished that call, he will be joining us at the committee of the hall.
All right, thanks, Frank. That's definitely an important call.
Yes.
All right, I see Fred's on twice.
Multiple personalities.
All right. I don't know, Amanda or Anna, can you verify that?
No comment.
Uh-huh, smart. Hi, Fred.
I heard that twice.
So how are the twins, Fred?
They're good. In fact, tonight's their first meeting of their T-ball team, so I'll be stepping out. I actually got suckered into being a coach, so, because they literally had nobody else.
I hear about them through their grandpa.
Yeah, he's a big supporter. He's not much of a baseball guy though, so he won't be helping out with that.
I believe that.
Okay, I see that we are live and we are recording. I think everybody who needs to be on the meeting now has access. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order on this beautiful Easter Monday. For those that observe the holiday, it's a beautiful day here in Reading. And our council president will be joining us a little bit later into the meeting. And Melissa also was excused this evening, so I think we're all here. So we'll get started today. And just a reminder, we are still doing our meetings virtually. So everybody who is with us this evening or catching this at a later date, you can access all the information through readinggay.gov, whether it's a portal that you want to watch the meeting through, our agendas, et cetera. And so you'll see, it's Monday, April 5th, 5:00 p.m. Our agenda here is, begins with zoning 101. We have about 30 minutes anticipated for a nice introduction to zoning by, I believe, David Paris, who's going to be leading us through that. So I'm going to turn it over to you, David, and let you start out with our first agenda item.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the invitation to come and talk about zoning. And I'll talk a little bit about planning too in the city and just give a little bit of foundation for how zoning and planning have come about. And mainly want to focus on what do they mean to the city of Reading? And I know that in the agenda packet, there's some great material in there from the state DCED having to do with zoning and planning. And I'm not going to go through that word for word by any means. So that's just a good resource that you may want to refer to during or after this presentation. I'm going to start out with just a sort of a basic overview. And I'm happy to take any questions that arise, you know, as we go along. And I was asked to leave some time for questions at the end. So whatever is easier for those who might have questions along the way, I don't have any problem with that. I'm going to share my screen now just so that you'll have the couple of slides that I wanted to use as we go along. And you should be able to see a little streetscape if I'm sharing the correct screen. Can you see that?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
Okay, all right, good.
The pagoda lights are still up in Allen. That's interesting. Goes back a few years. And it was still sovereign bank. That goes back a lot of years.
So yeah, this is.
The new Reading Eagle Building wasn't here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's actually, this picture is kind of a good illustration of the first point that I wanted to talk about when it comes to zoning in the city of Reading. And that is that nowadays we talk about zoning as something that is really a reflection of the vision that we have for a community and for the city of Reading, the vision that we have for this city. But it didn't always work that way, and it doesn't always work that way. The origins of zoning, as you look at the history of it in the United States, it was really used as a substitute for enforcing and preventing nuisance activities. So the examples that you might think of is having a skyscraper that's built right next door to your house in a way that blocks your view, your sunlight and your airflow. Or think about a factory being built in a residential neighborhood. Those are the kind of sort of negative examples of how zoning can come in. And it can help to prevent against some of those negative things. When zoning regulations first started out, they were, there was a lot of resistance to them. And there were some court battles over the early zoning ordinances. One of the very, and I'm not going to go through a lot of legal history here at all, but one case that anybody who's involved in zoning knows is Euclid, which was a town in Ohio that had one of the first comprehensive zoning ordinances, and it was challenged. And that's why, of course, you know, it ended up in the courts. And the Supreme Court upheld it and found that that was something that cities could do. It was a legitimate exercise of their police power was the right to regulate certain things. Now, that was in the early 1900s, but I put a timeline up on the screen just to kind of put this into perspective a little bit. So that Euclid case that I just talked about is here in the middle of the timeline, in 1926. Another one I put on there just as kind of a marker was in the 1880s, New York City started restricting building heights. Again, the skyscraper construction was sort of driving a lot of those restrictions. But I wanted to highlight some of the dates that are specific to the city of Reading as well. So if you go back a little while, just in mid 1700s, and I know all of you are very familiar with this, with this history, but if you think about Reading starting in the mid 1700s as a real town and that real town site that's laid out and started to be planned, thank you, William Penn, you realize that there's so much that the building of Reading, of that, that happened long before anybody even uttered the word zoning. And so all of this time here, in the history of Reading, like many cities of its time, there was not zoning or planning activities going around. As you can see, the city first created its planning commission in 1914. The first zoning ordinance came about in 1957. And then first subdivision land development ordinance came about in 1961. And those have been modified and amended many times, many times over since then. But just kind of puts it into perspective, a lot of building and development had already happened by the time we started really doing anything along the lines of zoning or planning. So before I get too much further into this, I just wanted to mention that now when we talk about zoning, it's not intended to be something that's just a way to restrict activity. And it certainly started out that way, and it certainly does have those components to it. But when I said in the beginning that zoning is meant to be a tool that helps the city to implement the vision that it has for itself, that's really important. And that's where the intersection of planning and zoning are really important. Because cities have the ability and are charged with the task of planning their vision for themselves. And comprehensive planning is the term that we use in the planning world for that. And when a city has a comprehensive plan, as does the city of Reading, what should follow the update to that comprehensive plan is taking a look at the zoning ordinance and saying, you know, this ordinance may have worked for us in 1957, but that doesn't necessarily meet the needs of the city today in 2021. So that's an important exercise. The governing law that affects planning and zoning in Pennsylvania is the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, or MPC. And that states that cities are required to update their comprehensive plan every 10 years. So you take a look at your comprehensive plan, and there's a lot that goes into that. There's a lot of components, and that's not going to be the subject of this presentation. But when that process happens, that will trigger the next step, which is the zoning ordinance. It's kind of this back and forth. So you plan, and then you update your zoning ordinance, and then you go about administering the zoning ordinance. And then you kind of go back to the drawing board a little bit, and you make some changes, and you have to make tweaks along the way. So I know a lot of people in the room here have been part of that process. Just in recent months, we've made some changes to the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and the zoning map. And we continue to do that, and it's sort of a work in progress. So one of the things that I was asked to talk about specifically, and I know this question has come up in the past, the last time we had a zoning map change and ordinance change was, you know, what exactly is the, what are all the districts in the city? And I have up on screen the names of zoning districts that you probably won't recognize unless you have been diligently studying the original zoning ordinance of the city. Most of these designations don't exist, at least in this way anymore. But I just thought it was interesting to take a look at what the old, the original zoning ordinance had for the different zoning districts. So there's four different residential districts. One is limited one family. And it goes up in density from there for all the different residential districts. And then you can see what they call business districts. Then you have manufacturing, light and heavy. I'm going to skip ahead to our current districts and just give you a quick idea of what some of those are. And before I look at the map here, I'm going to just outline these districts really briefly. The residential districts, there's still four of them. There's, again, the increase in density. For example, you take the residential district in the R1 where you can have single-family homes primarily. And then you increase where you can start to have attached homes, somebody attached. And then finally, multifamily in the R3 district. You have what I call a mixed-use district. They're really, most of them are referred to as commercial districts as one form or another. But most of the commercial districts do allow various types of residential use as well. So it's really a mix along, in the different areas of the city. I'm going to come back to the map in a second. The manufacturing districts that we have are still kind of a light and heavy. The light manufacturing, we now call manufacturing-commercial. Again, it's kind of a mixed use. It allows for a lot of the commercial uses. And then the heavy manufacturing has the more intense industrial and processing types of uses. And then there's special districts and overlays, including municipal uses, a preservation district, which you see a lot of on the hillsides and so forth to protect natural resources. And then we have a number of different overlay districts as well. An overlay works over top of the existing zoning district. So what I'm going to do now is put the zoning map up on the screen so that you can get an idea of these districts a little bit. I'll start with the commercial core. Here in orange, this is the, you can see it sort of follows the Penn Street corridor up through the first seven blocks or so coming up off of Penn Street Bridge. And as you go out, you can kind of see a transition to what we have a CR, which is a commercial residential district, along here out to the north and to the east especially, from the commercial core district. Surrounding this commercial core, commercial residential area, there's a lot of yellow. And most of this yellow, you'll see the R3 here, most of this is residential area. However, you do see a few pockets. You'll see here the CN. There's a pocket here that follows the 8th and 9th Street corridors. Another pocket as you go up Spring Street, around 6th and Spring. Just highlighting a few. There's a couple of pockets along Schuylkill Avenue. Another one over here along 13th Street, and then down at 9th and Binghamton, just to name a few. As we go up a little farther, you can see you follow the railroad corridor. There's the manufacturing-commercial zoning district. A large portion of the city, the northern parts of the city are in that manufacturing-commercial district. But then you still see pockets of residential even in the midst of that. There's, for example, the Northmont Neighborhood. Over here in the northeast, obviously you have a lot of residential that gets a little bit less dense as you go up into the east. And again, you can see all this area in green is this preservation district. This is just to outline a few. I'm not going to go through the entire city parcel by parcel, but just thought I would give you an overview. And this zoning map, it does change from every year or so. We make a few tweaks. But the map itself is available online, and we also have it in a digital form so that whenever somebody comes in and wants to do something, which we'll talk about in a second here, within zoning, we can look up a particular property and say, okay, this is the zoning district that this property is in. And as we'll talk about, that becomes very important. The one other district that I just mentioned here that I didn't comment on is we have these manufacturing districts. And then along Lancaster Avenue, you have this commercial highway district or CH. So that's another kind of orange color in here. We also have a pocket of CH along the Route 10 Morgantown Road, as well as the Warren Street corridor up here. So just a few highlights there on the zoning map. Now I'm going to flip back over to the slideshow. Here we go. Okay, so just to talk a little bit about what kinds of rules or regulations are involved when you think about zoning. There's rules in zoning that regulate the use of a property. There's rules that we call dimensional in nature. It has to do with the building dimensions, the height or the width, where the building can be situated on the property, rules about parking, and various other miscellaneous rules. Uses are a big part of what we do in zoning. And anytime somebody comes to us and says, well, hey, can I open up a bodega here at this location? The first question that we have to look at is, is this a permitted use in this zoning district? So let's say we're looking at one of those pockets of neighborhood commercial that we looked at on the map. We might say, okay, a retail store is a permitted use. And when we say permitted, another way that we refer to that is permitted by right. And what that means is that assuming all the other supplemental requirements are met, we can issue a zoning permit. At staff level, there's no need for a public hearing. There's no need for additional bodies to review or approve that use. Because city council has already enacted this zoning ordinance and said, we are okay with these types of uses existing here in this location. Then when you go beyond the permitted by right uses in a particular district, you also might have what are called special exception uses. Those are still allowed uses, but they do require additional review. They require a public hearing, and they require approval by the zoning hearing board. An example of a special exception use is a place of worship. And in the districts where those are allowed, they're typically allowed by special exception, which means that the zoning hearing board still has to review the application. The zoning officer cannot just issue a zoning permit for a church. That has to go to the zoning hearing board. There has to be a public hearing, and the board may impose certain conditions. A conditional use is very similar to a special exception. The big difference is that it is city councils that approves a conditional use as opposed to the zoning hearing board. Another difference is that the planning commission also reviews conditional uses. But otherwise, they are the same in that they are both allowed uses in a district, but just the use that requires this extra step of a public hearing, some additional meeting that it has to go to. And again, the approving body, be it zoning hearing board or city council, is allowed to impose certain conditions on their approval. And those conditions, the zoning office will look at, and we will make sure that all of those conditions have been met before issuing a zoning permit. Any use that is not specifically allowed in a zoning district is considered a prohibited use. And what that means is generally speaking, that, again, the city council in enacting a zoning ordinance has said that these uses are not to exist in this district. Sometimes there are situations where it is appropriate or where is determined to be appropriate to have these uses where there's some unique hardship associated with the property that to follow the ordinance under its strict terms would impose this hardship on the property. And in that case, the zoning hearing board may grant a variance from a particular provision of the zoning ordinance. So that variance could be a variance from the use, where the board could say that this use is not allowed, but it is in keeping with the neighborhood, and it meets the other standards. A recent example of a variance that was granted by the zoning hearing board was a distillery brewery use that was in a district where it wasn't allowed. And this actually was found to be in keeping with the Penn Street corridor and was allowed to come in there even though it wasn't an allowed use in that district. And then finally, another type of use that's mentioned here is a non-conforming use. And this is a very broad term, and I'm not going to go into great detail here. But generally speaking, a non-conforming use means that at the time that the zoning ordinance was enacted, so you go back in time to 1957, this use already existed. A lot of our churches, for example, in the city of Reading existed long before zoning ever was contemplated. And so you're going to see that those churches may exist in a district where they're not allowed, or they may not meet certain requirements, for example, a setback requirement. And that's just one example. But when a use is lawful and is a lawful non-conforming use, it's predated the zoning ordinance or some amendment to the zoning ordinance that would have made it not allowed. That is generally allowed to continue if there's no changes made to it. Expanding a non-conforming use or making a non-conforming use more intense, now that's different. Then we get into the territory of needing to go through the process of review by the zoning hearing board. And then a variance or a special exception review may be needed. Just a couple of examples of dimensional rules. So that might include the setbacks. Incidentally, setbacks are one of those restrictions that existed on properties long before zoning came about, and usually from the fire prevention context. But you see that in a lot of areas and for a lot of uses, there is a requirement that there be some spacing between the building on one lot and the building on the next lot, and also from the right of way and so forth. The other example of dimensional requirements is coverage of a lot. So this is an example of a pervious paving where water is allowed to enter in. And there's also buildings on this lot, and that just gives you a few examples of, there's limits on how much of a particular lot can be covered by a building or by paved surfaces. And there's a lot of great reason for that. And the one that's particularly important is that the impact of any kind of paved surfaces on the overall system of the storm sewers and the capacity of the city to absorb that much water runoff is limited. And there's an environmental impact as well when it comes to additional impervious coverage. And so that's something that is limited by the zoning ordinance as well. I'll touch very briefly on this because I want to make sure that there's a minute or two for questions if anybody has any. But one other example of requirements is parking requirements. These are usually calculated based on either the number of dwelling units, or in the case of commercial uses, it's usually the number of employees or the size of the use, usually the floor area for that. A lot of times people say, oh, well, I have parking on the street. Well, street parking doesn't actually count as part of that minimum parking requirement. It may be used by the customers of the building, of the business, but it's not actually a, it's not actually part of that calculation. If the use comes in, and for example, that bodega that we gave as an example, let's say it's an allowed use in the district where it is, but there isn't any parking. That's where maybe a variance from the zoning hearing board might be requested to say, well, the use is okay, but we don't have enough parking spaces, so now we need to go to the zoning hearing board for that. And then there's other kinds of requirements that you might see as part of the ordinance. The zoning ordinance is, for example, restricting the size or number of signs that you can have, requiring landscaping, maybe requiring lighting, requiring a sidewalk, making sure that there's enough sight distance so that you can safely, so the traffic can safely make turns around the corner and see pedestrians, minimum apartment sizes, and so forth, just to name a few. And then one last comment. This is not so much about the rules, but just about the process. We've talked about the one-stop shop a lot lately, and so I always like to put in a plug for that. We encourage, especially for bigger projects, the developers or the design team to come in and meet with the various departments and just get some general overview of the project. There's no cost to the developer to do that, so they can come in and get a lot of information. The first, you know, formal process is to submit a zoning permit application and a plan. That gets reviewed by staff. And then if any special meetings or hearings are needed, for example, from the zoning hearing board, planning commission or council, then those get scheduled. And that all has to happen before the zoning permit is finalized and issued. And then the last step is after all the different disciplines and building and trades have gone, and fire have verified that everything is compliant there, zoning gets one more check at that point before its certificate of occupancy is issued and before the use can actually begin. So that's sort of from start to finish. There's a lot left out from that, but that kind of overviews what the process is like. So I will stop there. I don't want to take too much time here. This is just meant to be a very broad overview, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to take this.
Okay, thanks, David. I think maybe, you know, for initial purposes, keep that screen share option available in case somebody wants to refer back to that. That was, I think, an excellent 101 introduction. Well done. Really hitting on some of the key aspects that I think have come up in some of our discussions. And I have several questions, but what I'd like to do first is welcome Jeff. is welcome Jeff and then open it up to council members to pose some of their questions or comments at this time.
Strat.
Go ahead, Strat.
Listen, David, how often are there changes made to the regulations, zoning regulations? When something comes up or do you suggest changes prior to a problem?
Yeah, we try to anticipate them. And to answer your first question, we had about, I want to say five or six, I mean, they happened in sort of two distinct packages last year. There were two zoning ordinance amendments that had some kind of subparts to them. And in the prior year, I think we had done one or two as well. And there's sometimes bigger, bigger changes, like adding an entire new overlay. That was just kind of a big one. That happened a couple of times over the past few years. So I would say maybe, you know, once on average, maybe once a year, there's something pretty big, but some of the smaller changes can happen along the way. And to answer your second question, yeah, sometimes when a developer comes in or even just as staff discusses, you know, typical problem spots, then we like to refer to council the opportunity to make a change that might make it more inviting for a particular kind of project. Or on the other hand, maybe there's something that is problematic, a use that neighbors don't like to see and they may want to make an area more restrictive. So that could go either way.
Well, I think zoning is a terrific idea in the city of Reading, except it affected my family many, many years ago at Seventh and Penn Street where the hotel is now, okay? My uncle and my dad had the first restaurant there on the corner. And somebody walked in one day from City Hall and they said, under the eminent domain, you can no longer have a restaurant here. When they applied, they didn't have to have any, there were no regulations. So you said earlier, if you already existed and were operating, they couldn't come in and tell you what you can do and what you can't do, right? But they took their property from them. And I didn't think that was right, but it was for the development of the city of Reading. And like I said, from the very beginning, I think zoning is a very good idea, but it did affect my family.
Okay, thank you, Strat. Donna?
Yes, thanks. Thanks, David, for this overview. I think it's really important that we all know the basics of this and understand, understand both the evolution of zoning and where we're at at this particular point in time. And as you look at that zoning map and you see how the city grew from its core in 1748 to the annexing Glenside in 1914 and other areas, one, you know, one missing park, all the, all the sort of extra areas that were added. And you look at how the city developed and you see how in the interior core of the city, the mixed use that was so prevalent then, the factories that were right next door to the houses, they're right next door to the churches and the bars and everything else. We see now how important zoning is in terms of public safety when you look at the industrial complexes that were literally built right next to the, to the row homes. And now is as they've been, some have been abandoned, some have collapsed, the dangers that posed. So with the newer parts of the city and I'm saying 100 plus year old parts of the city, it's, I think it's very important now we understand the zoning and we understand the regulations because it is both in terms of economic development's important, but it's also important in terms of public safety that in an R1 area, you're not going to have somebody operating a garage and a home next to other homes. Or in an R2 area that a heavy manufacturing doesn't get a special exemption to be among very small businesses and homes that are either duplexes or singles or whatever. So it's really critical. We look at the overlay area and riverfront that will directly impact the Dana site. And hopefully that's being marketed and appropriately RFP'd very soon, but certainly having a mixed use there that's suitorate for both economic development, aesthetics and residential is really important. So redoing these zoning laws, and I know I was a part of the 2001 look at it when I was on the planning commission. And as we do those, you know, as the years go by and then update the Penn Street retail requisite, which is now the overlay, which has changed a bit, all those things are important to involve in the city. So it's public safety, it's economic development, it's residential volume life. And I hope that as we move forward on any individual special exception request or, you know, things like that, we keep those ideas in mind. So thanks, David, much appreciated. And I have a couple of things to catch up with you on. I'll do that one this week. Thank you.
All right, that's great.
Thanks, Donna. Marsha, I think you were next.
It's just hold on. Okay, a couple of questions as far as, first of all, educating the public. First of all, this was a really good overview, but I think a lot of people moving into the city may not understand zoning. We need folks that are bilingual, bicultural to have a better understanding because it may be different from where they may have resided. How's the city make sure that people understand what zoning means and what the requirements are?
Yeah, that's a great point. We have had a few opportunities, quite a few opportunities for some outreach. We have done a lot of that in person. We were able to attend some, you know, before the pandemic, we were able to go to a number of different events, for example, with realtors, with various business associations. There was a small business seminar recently that we were invited to participate in that was specifically for small businesses with a, there was, the first one that I got to participate in was actually a Spanish language course. And so the, you know, kind of target audience was the Latino community. In addition, other business owners have had similar discussions where we've been able to provide a lot of this information as kind of a basics. And it was even more of a sort of a 101 course, not with all this background so much as here's what you have to do to actually comply with zoning. Here's why it exists, very briefly. And we talked not only about zoning, but also the other permitting requirements that exist in the city. That said, there's a lot more opportunities out there. I think we can do a lot more to, to get the word out to people to just explain that process.
And another question I had, which is an area that's zone preservation, that I think a lot of us take for granted because it is what it is, okay? And you had said that the zoning ordinance can be amended by council. My concern is thinking ahead to the future. I don't trust what might be coming down the line. And I know that there may be a push for development that we never might realize now, but could happen. Is there any way that we can guarantee that what's zone preservation is maintained preservation in perpetuity? So that our mountain sides are never developed? And that was an effort and I was naive about it behind my home on Everstink Mountain. Luckily didn't happen, but I can see this happening for a lot of city owned land where people just might want to build a little bit more up the mountain and a little bit more up in the mountain. And suddenly we're not going to have the preservation anymore.
I think one of the really important things to take into account with that is back to a plug for comprehensive planning. It's really important because it's true. City council today can feel one way and then tomorrow could come along and, and make, make some changes that city council of yesterday wouldn't be happy about. And all of that can happen, but challenges do exist to zoning ordinances and a lot of the root of those challenges are whether or not the ordinance is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. So starting at that beginning point of looking at your comprehensive plan and saying, these are areas that we do not want to ever see developed and stating that very clearly as an objective of the, of the body of city council is really an important protection that you can, that you can kind of build in. And it's not, you know, it's not ironclad. There's still, you have the ability to change the law, but it does give some more protections to those areas that need it the most.
And a question will come down, this isn't directly related to, is where we are with the update of our comprehensive plan. That's another discussion for another time.
We'll be happy to talk more about that.
Yeah, that's absolutely important.
Thanks, Marsha. I know that was on my list too. So we'll have to have a whole separate agenda topic and invite you back, David, to do comprehensive plan 101.
Yeah, we don't want to get another 10 years late. The 2020, it's already 2021.
Right.
And my question was kind of along those lines about the comprehensive plan because I always wonder, you know, is there a master plan for our city that includes every so often assessing neighborhoods and communities to identify what the needs are? So then we can be very strategic and intentional about the types of business that we want to allow or even incentivize our businesses to come in in certain areas to provide a need for that community. But I guess the comp plan is something that's going to be in the works or not sure who may have the answer for that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a major undertaking, a comprehensive plan. It's a very important step. And there are components to that that are being developed even as we speak in between the times of the, the major overhauls. For example, the downtown plus and the comprehensive parking study, the open space plan that you saw a few months ago. Those are all potential components of a comprehensive plan and those all kind of feed into that. The major update, the major overhaul, that's a, it's a undertaking that takes some time and there have been some efforts to revive, revive that. We've been looking into some funding sources and into some of, we've been outlining some of the steps that will be needed to do that in the, in the near future. So we'll be happy to talk a lot more about that and put in a big plug for it. And I, I think as those who have said, you know, we will have a, one of separate, you know, comprehensive planning 101 discussion just about that. And we'll, we'll be happy to talk more about it.
And I also want to know, one of the things that I hear a lot about constituents is that, and I don't know if zoning regulates this or not, but in terms of, you know, how is it allowed that you can have similar businesses side by side on maybe one block, so maybe like two barber shops door to door, next door to one another? Or bodegas, like just within walking distance from one another? Is that something that, that we are allowed to regulate or not really?
There are some provisions in the zoning ordinance today. Not the example that you gave of a barber shop or a bodega, but, but like daycares and group institutions. And there's certain types of uses where the proximity to another similar institution is limited by the zoning ordinance. So yes, I mean, that is something that can be taken into account.
And then one last question. What is the difference then between commercial neighborhood and commercial residential?
The difference really comes down to what uses are allowed in that district and what, and what uses are not. The commercial residential is kind of a transition zone that goes between the downtown area and the dense residential R3 area. And there's a kind of, it's kind of the eastern and northern sides of the commercial core. The, the other one that you asked was the commercial neighborhood. And that's more pockets that are scattered at the main, major like intersections and hubs throughout the R3 residential district. One other key difference is that in the commercial residential district, street parking is, excuse me, off-street parking is not required for commercial uses. That's also true in the downtown commercial core. And those are the only two districts in which that's the case. Whereas in the commercial neighborhood, which is closer to those R3 districts, they're still required to provide off-street parking for commercial uses there.
Council's on channel 99, but you don't get it too, right?
Hey Strat, can you put yourself on mute, please? Thanks, everybody. Okay, Johani, any other questions?
That's the last one. How do we get ourselves in a position where we're like ahead of the trend, if at all possible? As things continue to change, as we're going into, you know, the future, like how are we, how do we prepare ourselves to constantly be at F?
I think that's a great question. And rather than giving you the thing that I've said now multiple times of, you know, we need a comprehensive plan. That is a part of it, absolutely. But another thing to look at is a, to set a certain, certain frequency of saying, we're going to take a look at our zoning ordinance or we're going to take a look at our, at our planning activities, you know, once a quarter or twice a year and say, you know, what's working, what's not working? I think that's a discussion that at minimum, say, let's say, once a year is a really good conversation to have and could certainly have it more frequently. So I would say at staff level, we're doing that to some, to some extent, but maybe to have a broader conversation with multiple, you know, stakeholders more, more frequently would be really valuable.
Thank you so much, David.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I find zoning and planning fascinating at best. So I really appreciate what you do and the role that you play and just giving us some time to kind of unpack this little by little. So I'm going to, I have eight questions, but I'm not going to ask you all eight. I'll probably send some via email through you and Jamal. First question, looking ahead in the future is, as we just alluded to recently, there's been a lot of conversation about restoring passenger rail service, right, and Amtrak and what's happening. And something that comes along with that, I think, in frame of what we're talking about is transit oriented development and how that overlay, right? Kind of where you were showing, you know, over our downtown core, ideally, you know, would, I guess, be considered. But I'm very novice at having this discussion. Can you talk a little bit about that, a TOD? And is that being considered? Is that something that you're looking at and others are considering now that this conversation is gaining momentum?
Yeah, that's hugely important. And anytime that you're looking at some, you know, major change and, and, you know, obviously the introduction of, reintroduction of passenger rail to downtown Reading would be a major, major change. It's something that you do want to plan for and be ready for. And so having a zoning ordinance that allows for and even encourages transit oriented development is really important, not only looking just at your zoning ordinance, but also how do other pieces to the puzzle factor in? For example, your, the city's relationship with, with public transit authorities, for example, or, or the, the parking requirements that are currently in place. And all of those different things play, play a role. One of the things that I would, or just a quick answer to this is since we have the opportunity to receive a lot of really valuable input from professional consultants as we are working with the downtown plus, that's, that's certainly a topic that we want to get their input on and give us a toolbox that we can use for that.
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear you bring up the fact that really the strategic planning process right now is maybe the first place to address that and to address, you know, the considerations of, you know, not only could this be an economic development node, but we have to consider, you know, do we, what type of development do we want to see and what do we want to preserve when this happens, right? So to Johani's point of, of, you know, not being reactionary to, oh, my gosh, now there's a train or that, you know, and, and everybody wants to live here and everybody wants to open up a shop here. And, you know, setting parameters prior to getting to that. So it sounds like you have already started to take that into consideration. It makes me really happy. Second point, when you pulled up the map, it was great to show, you know, residential versus commercial. What I'm looking for, if it exists, would actually be almost a second layer to that in terms of then, how do things like the opportunity zone, you know, apply to those areas? How, how does even, you know, not anymore, but like an improvement district apply to that, you know? And, and how are we looking at that and incentivizing development? Does, does something like that exist, David?
Yes and no, it does. Not always in the zoning ordinance. It's not always spelled out there, but as a more of a practical application, you know, when any new development project comes along or we meet with somebody who's interested in a project, or we meet with somebody who's interested in a project, we have to talk about all of those things, whether they're written into the, you know, the standard, either the SALDO or the or the zoning ordinance, whether they're present on this particular map, we still have to look at all of that and, you know, be aware of all the different incentives that are available. So we try to work as a team with with planning, with community development, with zoning to make sure that everybody's aware of all of those those different opportunities. And as we do make changes to the ordinances, we need to make sure that they're designed in a way that, you know, that complements the the opportunity zones and improvement districts and so forth.
Right, and I know that, you know, they're often up for renewal, you know, or at best, you know, the whim, should I say, the political whim of, you know, where where we're putting our efforts every couple of years. But I think to have, you know, we rely on the knowledge and historical knowledge of whoever's there in your position and others, you know, to bring it up, to say, oh, you did you know this is an opportunity zone? Oh, did you know, you know? But but beyond that, you know, to make it outside of the ordinance, to use it as a visual tool and maybe, I guess, like a developmental tool, you know, for future development is like a packet, right? To say like, oh, as of right now, like annually, you know, here, here, here we are. Here are the the incentives or taxes or something like that. Tax abatement programs that fall into some of these areas that you're looking at, I think, would be an important tool. I want to ask two more questions if time will allow, and I'm just trying to keep an eye on where we are. Let's start with our zoning review process. It was really great for you to outline what that process is, and I know that it's more comprehensive than what you had there. But my question is, how long does that process take in Reading? Generally, I know that things are very case specific, but, you know, if you had to generalize, how long does that take? And how does that compare to other cities or municipalities around us? And if you don't have that answer tonight, that's A okay, and you can come back at another time and present that information.
Yeah, as I've looked around at other cities, at least what's in their written ordinances, they range anywhere from thirty to ninety days on a zoning review. And I think that has a lot to do with the volume that each municipality might be dealing with. At the moment, we're currently more on the ninety day side of things, but that we have a very high volume right now. That can change, that can fluctuate somewhat. The zoning review time also, it depends upon, you know, how complex the project is, what kind of relief might be needed if there's variances, if there's review by the planning commission that's necessary, then it can take it can take months. And there's projects that will take years, but it's not because the plan is sitting on someone's desk. It's because there's state level reviews that are needed or because the project may get some changes to it and will come back with a new version of the same project.
I appreciate that answer because I hear it from different perspectives. So residential, for example, there's constituents who, you know, have been working two years on putting an additional driveway. You know, we've talked about this, right? So I hear that perspective of why is it taking me this long? It's important to hear from you directly, this is why. But on the other side, we have a lot of people interested in opening up businesses, you know? And they say, why is it this way in Reading and another way, you know, a different way somewhere else? So the more that we can openly talk about this and the accessibility to you and to the team, I think is really important for all of us living in the city and wanting to to do business here. Final question is, what are we learning and seeing from COVID in terms of zoning? You know, there's a lot of cities that are advertising, you know? This is like a, I don't want to say a COVID city because I know that's not the right way to say that. But, you know, incentivizing people who are working from home now, people who are looking for a different work, life balance, you know, and living situation. What are we seeing? How's that impacting zoning?
Yeah, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of different directions you can go with all of that, but just to keep it very simple. I think one thing that people have realized that they really appreciate is a nice mix of public and private space. And even in our in our public spaces, that it that it's comfortable and inviting. And if that means allowing for more more room for your sidewalk cafes, for your outdoor dining, to promote public health, maybe that's an important area to focus on. If it means allowing for more flexibility in your backyards or your front yards, you can have some more private space to entertain in, you know, that that might be something to look at. So, I mean, there's a lot of different lessons that we're learning from COVID. And as we've been reading a lot about what other places are doing, but we definitely want to look at ways that we can also be a leader and say, hey, this is what we're doing. You know, here's a good way that we're either reacting or preparing for, you know, the next unexpected turn.
Thanks so much. I look forward to hearing more about that last piece from you as you see the trends and kind of professionally what you're seeing presented. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff now in case he has any questions and then give him the reins for the for the rest of the meeting. Jeff?
No, I don't, but thank you, David, for the for the overview of zoning and all the great questions from council. We appreciate it. And, you know, maybe down the road, we can have another one. There's, you know, it's a lot of moving parts, right, zoning? So much involved. Donna?
Hi, yeah, I'm just seeing on our Facebook Live, there's a question from a constituent. Maybe this would be good to to answer, at least put in perspective. And this person is wondering if row homes being converted to multi unit apartments are considered through zoning and concern of more occupants and households and the parking issues that come with it. So that's probably a concern many city residents have. Can you just give a quick answer to that, David?
Well, the quick answer to it is that any single family home in the residential districts in the city are not allowed to be converted into multi unit. That said, there are cases where we find through the history that there has been a history of multi units. And sometimes due to those nonconforming use rights that properties have, they are allowed to reinstate. But that's there's a lot of, you know, legal determination that has to be made, and it's very much a case by case basis. But as a general rule, a single family home, whether it be attached or detached, cannot be converted into multi unit without going through a process with public hearings and so forth.
All right, thank you, David.
I follow through.
Yep, go ahead, Marsha.
Okay, and I think that I especially noted this being in an R three, living in an R three area. So many historically, whatever the reason, there are so many row homes, the size of the home that I live in, that have been made into multiple units. Is there any way we can get to the root of it? Because it really is impacted on the viability of our city because we have much denser population than really the city ever was designed to hold. And I don't know how we work through, whether it's through our plan for deconversion. And I had a home right very close to me where the people just continued with what I knew wasn't an approved use by, you know, renting out the apartment, even though I it never was really authorized to do that. And I could probably go down my block and count at least ten different homes where that's probably happened, where there are apartments within row homes. So I don't know what the I know there's no easy answer, but I think we need to contemplate this.
Well, David, I'll jump in there. I mean, Marsha, you know, they they need to have housing permits, right? And we can check the housing permit file. And then, David, I'm assuming codes would enforce, you know, if there if there isn't, then codes can be pulled in and, you know, cite them for lack of it's a good point, Marsha. I mean, there was a time where we had a complete abuse of zoning. And part of the problem was the city gave out housing permits like candy. All you needed was fifty dollars and you got a permit, and we didn't bounce up against zoning at all. We had to let a lot of stuff go through, but to Marsha's point, we believed it would be set and then pretty much controlled at this point. Any insights, David, into the housing permit zoning process today?
Yeah, I can speak just briefly on how it's working today. I mean, we have a lot of cooperation right now coming from the codes, property maintenance department, and also from building and trades when there is enforcement. And law has also been a big support that way to kind of work together to get to those. It's time consuming, and sometimes it's frustrating when somebody, for example, if a building is unsafe due to building code, it can be placarded. And sometimes that's enough to get people moving very quickly. But if it's strictly a zoning violation, then it has to go through the civil court process. It's a lot slower, and that can sometimes be frustrating. So we appreciate when we do work in tandem with those other departments. Then sometimes the thing that gets that brings compliance, it comes from a different office first, and then that leads them to fixing something up in zoning. But, I mean, that's not a complete answer to the question. If you have some specific properties, we'll be happy to take a look and see what we can do.
Right. And I think what's happened is historically, folks have lived in these thinking it's okay, and no one ever checked to see that. It was probably maybe about fifty years ago that this happened, and it kept on going. So everyone accepts it as the norm that it's okay, and it's really not.
And we are doing something with property maintenance right now to improve the property transfer process, to make sure that it's very clear what is allowed and what's not. Because there has been some miscommunication there, and we're looking at some improvements to that process right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions for David? All right, David, thank you again. Go ahead, Johnny.
Sorry. Yeah, no, just Marsha just reminded me. I know Donna has mentioned this in the past about possibly, like, any incentives in the future for converting multi into single. I think Donna has mentioned this in the past, how she would love to see something.
Right, you know, deconversion incentives, so to bring it back to owner occupied single homes. Yes, you're right. I think I think that would be a good thing for us to look at in terms of moving forward. The more we can do that, we save the housing stock, the beauty of the city, but we also de-densify, which Johani and Marsha and everyone else has certainly referred to and would certainly ease the, you know, the services that are required by having so many people in one unit. I often wonder, too, structurally, how these small row homes are able to deal with burden of the weight burden of furnishings and people and all that kind of stuff. A lot, but yeah, we should, maybe as much time comes around, that's the time to look at incentivization and what the bottom line would be for.
Yeah, I think a combination of carrots and sticks is very important with with that. Over as part of our blight remediation strategy, that'll be an important component.
Okay, any other comments? All right, David, thank you for the update. And we are going to move on here, counsel, to the real estate value analysis. Linda, who's on board for that?
I believe Abe was supposed to speak about that, but I don't think he's done with his five o'clock phone call yet.
I'm supposed to speak on that on behalf of Abe.
Okay, go ahead, Jamal.
So before I do so, if I may, just take a few minutes to respond to some of the questions that were asked by the council to David. And that is, Dave, you've done a very good job. Thank you very much. I'm really very impressed by your ability and your staff's ability of handling such a volume of work in a timely manner itself. Having said this, one of the aspects that I would like to touch base on is that we are actually working on the comprehensive plan as we speak right now. And there are biweekly meetings in which we meet and discuss what we're going to do. You've heard Dave saying that we are looking at sources for financing this project because this is about a hundred thousand dollars, sixty to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on all the components that we have. But we are also looking at the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan and trying to find out the component that can be can be recycled back and brought to life versus the component that we really don't want to address that because that I believe that that study was actually addressed and presented to some board members, but I don't think it kind of like saw the fruition to the successful adapting of that with the comprehensive plan. So that is something that we are working on at this point. In addition to that, what we have done, and specifically to answer the question that councilwoman Helen just mentioned, we do have a package that is actually bilingual package, and it is available on the website as well as we printed several copies of this. And the time when we will be able to meet with business owners, we provide them with a package of how you start your business in the city of Reading itself. And David, I think one of the things that we all agree on is that is issuing a zoning permit does not mean that you can open up for business. It is a very important crucial step for that. But a lot of our small business owners, they would realize that this is something that they they got the permit, but when they see somebody from building and trades coming in or property managers and asking questions, they panic and they say they think that they have received all the permits. So we we have made a conscientious effort to reach out to small business owners, and we've been into several grounds for discussions, such as the Small Business Administration's Congress Christie Holahan held a conference like that or a webinar for that. And actually, we've been very active in all avenues to inform our residents and our constituents that we would like to work with you and walk you through every step of that. I, the last thing that I would like to mention here is that how to be ahead of the curve. Linda receives from Albright the program about the master planning, and that is really a very good informative program for zoning, land development, and comprehensive plans. So probably I would strongly encourage our city council to attend some of these classes in there because you will find very good benefit to something like that. But again, David, thank you very much for all the effort and thank you for all the questions that you have answered. And with that, we will move on to the next one, unless you have questions for me and Dave. Okay, well, if there aren't any questions in there, I guess I cannot share with you my PowerPoint presentation that we prepared for this, but I'll be more than happy to walk you through it all together. What we have done is that in order to analyze the residential market and be able to finalize, to find out how we would be able to benefit from a from the market as we see it right now. The very first component that we would like to share with you, and that is basically there are what is the constituents of the residents in the city of Reading itself? Who are the people who live in the city of Reading? And to a certain extent, the gender classifications between male and female is almost identical. The female have a fifty one percent ratio versus the male have a forty nine percent or forty eight percent to that effect itself. But when you when you start looking at the categories of how you can actually look at who are the residents in there, it's very unique for the city of Reading to have a distributions in which about twenty five percent of the residents are underaged eighteen all the way to twenty four. And equally important are the twenty five percent of the populations actually from age sixty to seventy five. That population itself altogether, it tells us that there is a there is a generation that is being educated within the city and hopefully receiving higher educations, but also working in the city, as well as we are having a higher population of retirement within the city itself. And again, when you take these two parcels altogether, about fifty percent of our population is eighteen and over all the way to sixty are actually the people who are within what we call studying or working environment itself. So we dug a little bit deeper into this to find out how does this work and how does it help us itself? So we've carried an analysis between the boomers, the millennials, as well as we carried the same analysis for the city of Reading versus the United States as a nation itself. What we found out that actually in terms of the of the boomers, the baby boomers, whether it is male or female, we actually have a higher percentage per capita than the United States altogether. Not terribly much, but about in a ratio of about eight thousand in the city of Reading versus seven thousand nationwide altogether. But when you look at the millennial, male and female, what we found out that the city of Reading starved significantly when we are compared to the United States, as we actually see anywhere between thirteen hundred for male and fourteen hundred for female versus eight thousand for millennials in the United States. That is the working power, that is the new generation, that is the generation that will actually will require more of what we need to see as a vibrant city because the millennials have a certain approach to lifestyle versus the boomers, who they have a totally different view on all these things. Even when boomers were in their heydays, actually, one of the things is that taking a house and putting putting a title on the house is one of the important essential components for success. Whereas with the millennials, enjoying their time and having having extra money to spend for for entertainment is something that they look at that. So in summary, what you look into here is that if you look at where we are in the city of Reading, about sixty six percent of our population is what's referred to as the in need of caring to, meaning whether they are dependent, whether they are dependent in age, senior age, or they are dependent as children itself. And that is a large percentage that we have altogether itself. But the median age still But the median age still prevails, and that is about 30%. I'm sorry, the median age is about 30 altogether. So we dug a little bit deeper and we went into the housing occupancy. Based on the 2019 statistics and all of the data that I'm sharing with you actually comes in from the Census Bureau and their website, I'll be more than happy to provide you that link as well as the D C E D when we look for specific information regarding Pennsylvania and the city of Reading. So we have about 33,000, 33,500 housing units in there. About 29,000 over actually occupied. Here is the breakdown there between owner occupied versus rental occupied. And you will find out with the rental occupied is about 19,000. Almost two-thirds of the housing stock is rental versus about 11,000 or almost one-third of that is owner occupied. And obviously, we have about 4,000 units that are categorized as a basically vacant unit itself. In fact, in later analysis, we know that we don't have 4,000 vacant units, but that is the 2019 report. So when we look at the type of houses that we have in there, you'll find out out of the 33,000 stock, we have about 3,000 or 10% of that are the single units, and these are the detached units. Anything from one unit detached, which is the lion's share of the market stock in there or the housing stock, is about 18,000 of our housing stocks is our detached units. And when we go from the five units, which we consider the commercial, all the way to more than 20 units, we have approximately 6,000 units of those that are actually commercial. So when you look at the distributions of the housing itself, it pretty much lends itself to what Councilwoman Reed was saying, is that how can we de-incentivize these things, because the detached units could be a very good program for us to do so, as well as the two units that are based in the in a row home itself. Moving forward to the next step, and that is basically when you look at the rental versus owner in there, you will find out that with the rentals, approximately about 9,500 of our units are rented between $500,000 to $900,000. That is the lion's share of the rental units. When you look at the owner occupied mortgage, you will find about 4,500 of the units are actually, their mortgage rate is less than 100,000. And then when you start looking at the development of the analysis itself, you'll find that actually we don't have that many mortgages that are exceeding the 300,000. Pretty much almost nonexistent. So the stock of our housings kind of like limit itself to $300,000 or less with very, very few housings that are exceeding the 350 into the half a million dollar mortgage itself. So these components will tell you about how we are dealing with the residential market and how we should be able to improve onto that as we move forward. When you look at the number of bedrooms, most of the houses in the city of Reading are actually large homes. They are three bedrooms, four bedrooms, and five bedrooms. Approximately about 18,000 of these 33 houses, they are in the neighborhood, they are in the three bedroom, four bedroom, and five bedroom carers. But if you start looking into the migrations and the movement to the city, the startling and very impressive records that shows itself is that in the 80s and in the 90s, there was a positive movement that was going on about 2,000 to 3,000 units occupied, whereas after 2017, we have about 11,000. 11,000, let me repeat this, that is the positive movement coming into the city of Reading. That is not a surprise, simply because the infrastructure itself is, most of the houses are actually built before 1939. Hardly any houses were built in 2010 and onwards. We don't have that many new stocks in that area. And as a result of this, when you see the 11,000 influx into the city itself, it shows you that the city is offering most of its infrastructure, most of its used housings at a discounted rate, and we have the mechanisms through which we really need to move into this and move it forward to the others, to how we can make this a more productive system and more efficient for us. One of the last statistics that I would like to share with you is that you looked at the employment and residence itself, so we looked at how many people come into the city, and that is pre-COVID, by the way, and how many people work, live in the city and work outside of the city. We have about 21,000 individuals coming into the city to work. We have about 26,000 that are actually, they leave the city to work elsewhere. And we have about what's called 4,500 that they work and live within the city. So that's the circular movement that we have. So with all the statistics that we have, how can we move forward? And what is the impact of COVID-19 on our city and our community itself? Pretty much during the 2020 and most of the 2020, as we know, and until now, we are still in the COVID mode there, and hopefully we are getting out of it and recovering. But during that time, I would like to share with you some encouraging statistics. For instance, the Order Cooper, which is a Baltimore-based firm itself, built on Second Street, affordable housing for seniors' residents, and they build about 57 units, the majority of them are single bedrooms, but some of them are two bedrooms. And that's been occupied immediately, almost when the booking for that was going on in the last quarter of 2020. And when they received the certificate of occupancy, they actually, it was almost completed at that time. I'm also very proud to tell you, and I think our auditor recorded this in her data, I mean, weekly reports or bi-weekly reports to the city councils. In 2020, we have actually conducted almost 1,900 property transfers. So there are 1,900 properties, mainly residential, some of them are commercials, and a little bit less than that are industrials transferred hand in the year 2020. So that is a very positive movement, and this movement continues to grow till now. So in the very first quarter of 2021, we've had approximately 600 deed transfers. If we continue in the same pattern through the year 2021, that will be a very robust year over about 2,400 deed or property transfer as we look at it. There are also other projects that are in the work itself, and these projects are a mix of all types of the rainbow. We have them from the affordable housing such as the Westgate Buttonwood area. We have the developer by name Delaware Valley Development Company. They brought grass for 47 affordable housing units in there. These are going to be rentals. Habitat for Humanity is in the process of receiving final plan approval for building four duplexes, that's eight houses that they will be sold for deserving families. We also have received through the one-stop shop several inquiries and several requests included, and some of it is going to the planning commission for final approvals, such as smaller buildings for eight units, 10 units, and so on. They are still in the commercial part of it in there, but we are expecting a significant number of this to go through and be approved. And we also talked to you about the larger developments that's going on, for instance, the Reading station. We have about 550 apartments market trade that is going to be slanted between 2022 and 2024. We talked about the Madison Building and bringing it to its glorious days. That's about 85 market rate as well as luxury rates. We also have spoken about the Medical Art Building as well as other complexes, which includes 201 South Street as well as a new development that we are looking at on 11th Street itself. All of this is that how can we move forward? And you've heard from David Paris about how to move forward. We looked at the zoning ordinances and how we have tried to relax the zoning orders in some areas to attract more business owners and more investors to be, to come to our area and more specialized investors, those who specialize in market trade and high-end apartments, as well as those who are actually helping with the commercial part of it, bringing in retail and bringing in restaurants to our area as well as supermarkets. And we are currently in discussions with developers who are actually looking into coming in and look at that. The city administration continues to build bridges and continue to build bridges with entities and developers to make sure that we can bring into the best we can. We are also trying to understand the need of Albright, Alvernia, Reading College, as well as Tech Central, and by increasing the campus area and bringing in more students, whether it is on 13th Street or on Penn Street itself here, that traffic for students, which will create more there. But we are also trying to layer on multiple incentive packages itself. And some of these packages, as you have approved it, which is the Keystone Enterprise. The LRTA has been approved. The Opportunity Zone, that is actually a federal program that we are trying to, we are also discussing how to use industrial site reuse program, the Airstrip Inter, as well as the infrastructure and facility improvement program. These are grants slash low-interest loan programs, and we will be able to help the developers to come in. We're looking at how we can attract the millennials, how we can improve the walkability in the city of Reading, how we can improve the biking, and we are actually applying for a grant as we speak now to improve biking, and that is a joint effort between Penn State Health as well as G R C A and the city in order to improve on that and capitalize on this. And with all of that, we also would like to put a recommendation to the board at a time that the retap motion that you approved to revisit this so that it can actually include rental units, but that can be also structured in such a way that will be conditionally, subject to conditionally, so that your approval and your sample agreement on that, that will help large complexes buildings. And I understand that the board would not like to offer this to some what I consider less than desirable rentals, but we would like to have a very good stock for our residents. However, if we can offer something like that to high rises, that probably will be able to benefit the Medical Art Buildings, the Berkshire Buildings, as well as the Madison Building. That's it in very few words itself. Sorry if I rushed you through it all, and I was hoping I could share with you my PowerPoint, but I'll be more than happy to actually attach it to this presentation here so that you can see it, and I'll be more than happy to answer any of your questions and comments. Thank you.
All right, Jamal, thank you very much for that overview, Council. Are there any questions at this time?
Jeff, Marsha, I don't know where this fits in with the whole discussion, and I've been excited about a lot of the development that's occurred with market rate housing, but I also have a concern, and that has to do with the density of our youth population and the capacity of the Reading School District to handle more students. And as we look at converting more and more of what used to be office spaces to market rate housing, children are going to come along with that. And I don't know how much planning we're doing with the school district to have these kinds of dialogues, because they're at max capacity with the number of buildings they have, and they have to plan too together with us. So any thoughts? Has that been part of the discussion at this point?
That's a very good point, Councilwoman Henry. Yes, there has been very brief discussions about this, but let me share with you the statistics that we've had from this point. Often enough, and that is to the extent of about 80% to 85%, most of the families with larger, with kids, they would prefer to live into an area where they can benefit from a ground that they can play. And in another sense, they would prefer to live in a house or rent a house. High-rise apartments or apartments of that nature might not be very attractive to them, and the statistics support this. But in coordination with the Reading districts and understanding that we cannot really overburden the school districts, what will happen with any of these developments as they come in? We try to bring this to the school district's attention to let them know if there are any concerns in that. One of the things that we have not started doing, but it's been practiced in other areas, is to actually, when we see a land developer coming in of that nature, is to actually send it to the school district to let them know about it so that they are engaged from the beginning, as well as send it to the our city engineers to let them know about if there is any additional need for sewer or water capacity. But we are working on both ends of it.
Okay, thank you. Johani, I think you were next, right?
Yeah, my question is more about how do we market our real estate? Like whatever sites we may have available, just the opportunities and resources that the city may have to offer. What, how do we first communicate to those that are here and maybe have businesses and want to expand? What opportunities are available, and then how do we aggressively recruit or pursue people to come and develop and tap into our available real estate?
Well, Councilwoman, if I understand your question, and forgive me if I didn't, it's twofold. The very first part of it is that how do we look at commercial buildings and that we can provide residential apartments in there versus what we can do for like commercial facilities, meaning that we have restaurants or bodegas or something like that. Two folds of that with regard to the larger buildings, whether it is vacant or blight. Actually, we are now have a team effort, and this team effort is consortium between the city, community development, Reading Development Authority, as well as G R C A and the Bronx County. And we are trying to bring in and attract developers to come to the area and look at what we have in here and provide them with incentives so that they can come in there. Whereas for the commercial facilities, such as restaurants and stores, what have you, that effort has not yet been set up altogether. And probably that will not take place until we finalize the downtown plus study in which we will be able to see how we are going to market that effort.
All right, any additional questions? Go ahead, Donna.
With this being appropriate, time to ask for an update as to when RFPs are expected to go out on both Dana site as well as our downtown buildings and what the status of the RFPs on those particular parcels are at this point? Because I know I certainly get a lot of questions in District Five regarding the Dana, the 50 acres of Dana. And I believe a lot of us are getting a lot of questions about the downtown Fifth and 10th Street buildings, as many of us who have been on council for many years have. And I think we all want to, in optimum conditions, see some movement. And I think we all want to, in in optimum conditions, see some movement as quickly as possible.
Yeah, Jamal, I don't know if we're prepared to answer those, if not tonight, maybe next week, but it's if you are now, that's fine.
I'll be more than happy to give an answer and we can always dive deeper into it itself. With regard to the Calhoun Fifth and 10th, it was the strategy all along that will actually wait to the completion of the downtown plus study that that will help us to see what categories and where we are looking for and what we would like to do in the area altogether itself. The unfortunate part, the downtown plus study did not start when it was supposed to and it was pushed back a little bit. But right now we are actually moving into that full stream and pretty much we are hoping that we will finalize this sometimes in August of this year. We're hoping that within the next few months, we'll be able to to start formatting a complete understanding of where we're going to go with the downtown plus. And as a result of that, we will start formatting or developing a statement of qualifications in which we would like to see the developers as they come in and what developers will are wanting to offer based on their qualifications based on their history of business and what they have done in the past and what is their area of expertise as well as how is that supported by their financial backup from from that. And that is basically what we are looking for.
Are we going to be standing, standing firm on August date? Because I had heard originally, I thought it was, I thought we were looking mid April or June and now we're in April. I'm, I'm just really concerned. It just seems to continue to push, to push off. I'm very concerned about this, very concerned.
Yes, point will take it, counsel. We, like I said, the downtown plus study did not start until pretty much the beginning of January. And it's still taken about six months.
What, what was the delay? What was the cause for delay?
The delay was a combination of many things, including.
Who's leading this? Is the city leading this?
I'm leading this, yes. I'm leading this, yes. Okay, so we continue to work on that. And like I said, the delays that were done, that that led us to starting sometimes in the early of January. And we are looking at a presentation to the board sometimes in end of July, beginning of August.
Okay, additional questions? And I will add, that was an aggressive timeline to start with. We, that was our hopeful timeline, Donna. I know that it's gotten pushed back, but the reality is that it's a bigger chunk of work than we thought and everybody on the body is yet to be interviewed. I mean, there's a lot to go on yet.
But we, we have to, we have to have movement on those buildings. We have to have.
We do.
Years has this been now?
We have to have a plan that's feasible and effective and not just.
I, I agree, but I mean, this has been the context for many years now. I hope, I hope we can move forward. I'm, I'm getting very discouraged now.
All right, Lucine, you were next.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I think Jamal, that was a lot of of data. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, not being able to see it has me just completely scattered and really understanding what is happening. You know, I, I'm having difficulty not just in seeing a presentation with these, you know, statistics, but also understanding the priority here of, you know, whether it's the administration. You know, are we looking at blighted property remediation? Are we looking at market rate housing? Are we looking at, you know, subsidized housing? You know, what, what's the focus and where? I agree 100% with Donna's concerns because it seems that the administration had been focused on the downtown and the downtown plus. And the, the amount of time that it's taking is really holding the progress of almost, you know, so many other things, you know, in addition to these development projects that you, you even tonight repeated and we've been hearing about them, you know. I, I just am wondering if, you know, perhaps because I, I can't imagine the, the level of capacity that you have as an individual to be leading, you know, the, the downtown plus strategic plan in addition to everything else that's going on, in addition to the redevelopment authority. And this is where my personal concerns were initially in integrating the redevelopment authority into the CD department. And that, that's not a testament to saying you are not doing the best to your ability. But I have great concerns there in that things are getting completely scattered and and keeping us from the ability to focus. As I think David said, when he started, you know, talking about zoning, you know, this unified vision. And, you know, what, where, you know, we're, we as council want to follow the lead and and bring strength to the vision and emphasis of the administration's priorities. If that is downtown, you know, then, then all of these peripheral projects that that you alluded to, you know, and the statistics are refocusing on the millennials, are we marketing to, you know, the seniors, you know, the most vulnerable populations? You know, who is our target audience? What, what is the plan? Really are the questions that I have because it seems like we are all over the map right now. So I'm looking forward to seeing the presentation and digesting some of the information that you gave me tonight. And then I believe that I'm probably going to need to revisit some Q and A with you and and with other members of of the administration and the mayor's team to better understand how then we can stand behind and support and give direction to this unified vision. Because I'm just, I'm not seeing it and I'm not feeling it. And it, and it's with the pandemic, it, it is really continuing to to drag on. And for example, you know, the, the, the Calhoun buildings, we're not just waiting for an RFP. There's a lot of things that that need to be addressed while and prior to before that RFP is happening that I think are also at a standstill. So we are at a complete standstill right now. That's not a good place to be.
All right, additional comments or questions? I will, I will say, everyone's concerns are realistic. I also believe that the, the organization that we've hired SanTech for the strategic plan, at least for the downtown effort, will show us results if we're able to get effectively through the planning process with them, and I believe we will. I'm sure Jamal and everyone else is anxious to to get that done. And, you know, the housing strategy citywide is always something in flux. And I agree, you know, as we come to the end of the strategic plan for downtown, I know the administration is working on a community relations model for the neighborhoods. But we also have to step up with our, our overall housing strategy and there's a lot of things there that can happen to make.
Have to get moving. We have to get moving.
Well, no, well, we work at their pace.
We talk, you know, here we are, another study, here we are.
I, again.
I get it all the way around, but we have got.
I, I hear everybody. It's easy to be critical, but we have to allow them the space and their timeline to do it. It's also good to raise the question. So I just, you know, we want to work as a team and it's good to raise your concerns at the same time. It's a lot of moving parts. I don't want to keep saying that and, you know.
And it's been a lot of moving parts for a lot of years, Jeff. We've got to see movement. Now's the time with, with the, with the infrastructure plan and everything we're seeing coming down from the federal government, the assistance as we've seen. Now is the time because if we don't do it now, we're going to be, you know, what, out of luck and we got to do it. I agree with Lucine. I'm, I'm just tired of the stagnation. And tired of the way our city looks compared to other cities when we can be doing better. I know we can be doing that.
I don't disagree with you and, and, you know, I think you should have a conversation with the mayor and Abe and make sure that they understand.
Well, let's, let's have a specific conversation where the schedule is set that we can talk about these things publicly and definitively. Because our citizen, our residents need to know what's going on. So let's schedule it. Let's make sure everyone, everyone pertinent is available and not somewhere else. I'm serious, Jeff. We need to do this. We owe this to the people we serve.
We're here to follow the administration's lead and support their efforts. We have to, you know, understand their timelines, understand that and support their initiatives, the ones they think are their priorities or the ones they'll bring forward. We don't mandate to them what they work on, on how they work on it. I just want to be careful. Let's continue to express our concerns, but understand it's not always necessarily going to happen.
Jeff, it comes back to all of us as fiduciary stewards of the city to make sure that there is economic development, that revenue comes in, that we can.
I understand that. We're not giving up.
It's our town. We want to work with everyone, but we have to be more assertive. We have to say.
We're not giving up.
This has to be, Jeff.
We're not giving up any of our fiduciary standards, okay?
Yes, we are if we're not, if we're not intensely requesting and or asking that we have these, these conversations with all the pertinent people.
I want to be fair. Requesting is fair, but mandating is not. I mean, we, we have to, I, I understand the frustration, but I want to remind everyone, it's fair to make requests. It's fair to get an understanding of where things are. It is not our job to mandate when they should.
Then let's make the request that we ask within, within a few weeks, we have this meeting. And if it's a special meeting, it's a special meeting on economic development.
And I'll follow up with you on that meeting, okay? You and I will have that discussion.
Well, all of us, all of us. It don't want just to be me, I want it all of us.
Donna, I mean, scheduling that meeting, okay? Marsha and then Johani. Marsha, you unmute your, there you go.
I just want to be able to talk about as a follow through to what Donna says. When we as fiduciary stewards of the city look at finances, it has to do with economic development, has to do with, yes, the administration is responsible, is responsible for actualizing these things. But we have to have the oversight and that's what our role is on council. So to request a dialogue is what we have the responsibility to do. And we don't want to look in the past and say, okay, this has been delayed. We couldn't control what happened, but at this point now, we have an administration that wants to work with council. Let's keep the dialogue going. And I feel there have been too many meetings where we haven't gotten beyond square one and we keep recircling without moving forward. And that's what I want to see. And so we have this window of opportunity before we get into the budget again, to really take advantage of each and every one of our committee of the whole meetings to say, these are the topics we're going to go into and not to dance around them. What are the answers? What are the timelines? And it would be really appreciative and I know that there is other obligations, but just as we prioritize, so some of us having full time jobs, we prioritize to make sure we're here every Monday evening. We have asked out of other administrations and I want to respectfully say the same thing. The managing director and the mayor respectively should be at these meetings.
All right, and Johani?
Um, so I hear everyone's frustrations. I just wanted to say that I remember when we did that retreat and we actually had some projects that we put in some type of chronological order. Maybe it is time to revisit that timeline or or list that that came out of, that surfaced from that retreat. And maybe there is time to set up some time for another retreat to kind of like dive in and like really see what's happening and and create some type of timeline so then we know how we can be more supportive to the cost and and the progress of these projects. I know that this pandemic kind of like put us at a standstill, so I feel like we lost a whole year. We really did lose a whole year. But, you know, I, I, I believe that with this new administration though, we've seen a lot more progress though than we have seen in prior years. So I, I don't want people to feel like, oh, my gosh, we think you're not doing enough. It's just that, you know, it's frustrating because you see these properties sitting there for, gosh, has it been 10 years already? I, I don't even know. But so I understand your frustration. They happen to also be in my district, so I see them all the time. But we do have to make time, Jeff, and the body to revisit that retreat that we were all a part of so that we can help each other stay on task. And, and again, we are working as a team and we're trying to just get the best or make the best out of our city assets and resources.
That's a good point, Joanna. And you made that request about six to eight weeks ago, might have been a little longer. And I did bring it up to the may, to the mayor and Abe and just recently, maybe a few weeks ago, asked them to to try to get on that. So maybe that'll be, maybe that'll be the content of our regrouping, you know, to see if we can get some focus on some of those issues. Were there any other comments on this specific topic with Jamal regarding housing?
Counselor President, this is Frank, representing the administration this evening. I just wanted to share, definitely hear you loud and clear, the body. So definitely will share with the mayor and managing director, but want to reassure you that things are happening. Just just from perspective quickly is over two dozen proposals were sent to this RFP. And that was a very extensive process that required extensive review, making sure we selected the right company to be able to do this process. And because of COVID, and I won't be putting COVID as a reason for all this, but a lot of the bidders and a lot of this process was extended because the people who bid it on these projects asked for extensions because they didn't have their people and their companies and people working from home. So a lot of the delays in the procurement process was due to COVID. So we had a very aggressive timeline. We're keeping to that timeline. However, because of the procurement process and so many people being involved in bidding on this project, which is very encouraging. And a lot of people really see a lot of great things happening. And but there were 28 proposals roughly and that required a lot of review. And now that we've selected a company to be able to help us move forward, I rest assure you that you'll be seeing a lot more updates and progress as we begin this process of putting this plan together. So I want to rest assure you, we are doing, we are working hard toward that. We just need to communicate the next process to the body. And as suggested by the rest of council, particularly Councilwoman Reed, a meeting may be rightfully called a special meeting to bring everybody up to speed because I think we're at that point, we have updates to be able to start providing.
All right. Thank you, Frank. Any other comments on this specific issue? Because I know we have the chief on board here regarding the gun back, gun back, gun buyback update. Chief, if you're on board, welcome and the floor is yours.
Good evening, counsel. I should be pretty brief with this and if, I don't know if Jamar is on here, if he is, I'll have him speak to one part of this. If not, I can cover everything. The first thing is the gun buyback was originally scheduled for the 17th of April. There are two major events that conflict with that date, one being the celebration of Reading High School basketball team's state championship. And the other is, I forget the other event off the top of my, oh, there's a COVID mobile vaccination sites will be in the city that day. So we didn't want to take away from any of those events with this event or have those events take away from the importance of the gun buyback. So we will be rescheduling for the 24th of April, the following Saturday. And it will still take place from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And that'll be at two different locations. One is will be in the northeast section of the city. One will be in the southwest section of the city. We are firming up those two locations. I believe the mayor's office was making some final arrangements with both of those sites today. So I don't want to get ahead of ourselves and announce those locations if they haven't been confirmed yet. And then I will kick this over to Jamar for a moment to discuss the funding source and how some of that came together. But for the basics, right now, that's what we're looking at. We will have officers deployed at both locations with some additional personnel during those time periods to conduct the buyback operation. Christian, Christian Crespo, who is the city's communications coordinator, has been working on some media advisories. I was, I will be speaking to the event on W E U this Wednesday at 9 a.m. And I know there will be some other media releases and information going out as we firm up some of those details. So I will kick it over to Jamar to discuss some of the funding side of it. He's much more well up to speed on that than I am.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, members of council. The buyback program is currently being funded through donations under a trust account. Excuse me, but quee to the mayor's office. We are also seeking external donations to match the seed funding for the program that we have so far to date.
All right. Thank you, Jamar. Johani, you have a question?
Can you please describe for me? I have three questions. Can you, one question and two comment. Can you please describe to me the process? How does it work? Can you like lay it out for me, please?
So the basic process is we will have the two locations set up at this two places in the city. So the basic process is we will have the two locations set up, um, at those two places in the city. Uh, folks will be able to bring firearms to that location that they want to essentially sell to the city. The process with that is that we have to confirm that they're working firearms. Uh, we're still kind of discussing the values of what we're going to offer for them in terms of, uh, potentially gift cards, the amounts. Um, obviously we're looking to possibly provide higher amounts of compensation for the firearms that we're seeing involved in crimes here in the city. And then we take custody of those. We do some investigative work on the backside of that. Um, but those guns are turned in, uh, without consequence. So if you turn in a firearm and we later find out as we go through the process, which we have to in order to eventually destroy them, uh, that the gun was stolen or something like that, the person who turned it in is not going to be, um, held responsible for that.
So you're making that very clear in your announcements that there won't be any consequence to whoever is bringing them in or, or selling them back to the city?
Correct. And that is some of the additional communication that we're working on with the communications coordinator.
And then what, what are the estimates? What are the ranges in terms of what we're paying?
Um, we haven't finalized those. Yes, I, I don't want to speak to that at this point, um, to get ahead of ourselves in case that changes. Um, but it, it's, it's going to be in line with what we're seeing other cities are doing.
Okay. And then lastly, I think that at the events that you mentioned, the April 17th, whether there are two events or more, we should probably be handing out flyers to these events announcing this program. And I, we, we should also be conducting maybe email blasts and mobile calls to make everyone in the city aware of this gun buyback program.
Uh, those are all excellent ideas and I know we will be meeting in the very near future with the managing director, uh, Jamar and Christian. And I will make sure that those items are on the agenda. I like those ideas.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
This is Stratt. You know, being a retired police officer, did I catch what you said? Someone can come there with this with a weapon and just turn it in?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't he show ownership for this weapon?
No, there's, uh, no requirement that you are the registered owner of the firearm to turn it in.
Oh, boy. And you say if it's a hot weapon, what are they going to do about it? Nothing?
No, we, we aren't looking to arrest any individual who turns in firearms. So the purpose of the program is to just get firearms off the street.
Well, is this the way it's being conducted in other towns?
Yes, sir.
Well, okay, thank you.
Okay, Lucine?
So, um, I think chief, you said you were going to go on W E U to speak to this. I would recommend if possible also and to, um, Christian Crespo, uh, the opportunity to jump on some other radio stations that are widely listened to, uh, in our community, uh, so that we can really get the, the word out, um, to everybody who, you know, who'd be listening. And the funding piece is interesting to me. Uh, obviously, um, Jamar kind of delicately, uh, broached that in that there's some seed funding. But, but typically is that how it works? Is that, you know, the city in itself needs to, um, invest in, in this? Is there, uh, grants that then can be used to match or reimbursement programs? Uh, or are we looking at this as, as a basic, you know, kind of an expense, um, to the city at, at a certain level? Can, can you talk about that a little bit?
Happy, happy, happy to provide a little bit more clarity there. So, uh, to be clear, we are not using taxpayer funds for this gun buyback program. Uh, we are using donations for this gun buyback program. There are many, um, different models for it, uh, depending on, uh, which city and, um, size of the municipality. Um, but we feel comfortable with gift cards. Um, as the chief mentioned, we're settling on a range for a handgun versus a automatic assault rifle type of weapon. Um, but to be clear, the effort is to get illegal guns off the street. Um, it has been, um, proven to be helpful in, um, uh, urban, um, areas such as ours. Uh, so as we kick off the summer, um, the mayor was very desirous uh, to do one of these, uh, gun buyback programs locally, um, for the first time, at least in, uh, in the amount of times.
So Jamar, just to follow up then for a city our size, um, what do you typically see as, as that threshold of non-taxpayer dollars? I want to be very clear there, um, that, that is raised to support a gun buyback program.
Um, so we're starting with, uh, 10,000 in seed funding. Um, and, uh, the mayor is considering going out into the business community, uh, to build support with additional donations. Um, we, it, it's a, it's a fine line between, um, over promising and under delivering. So we don't want to throw out a huge number and then we, we don't have the demand to match it. Um, we kind of want to, uh, temper enthusiasm here. So we're starting out with 10,000 and we'll have to see, um, how we can divvy that up to make the maximum impact. Um, and, and, and achieve the goal, which is to remove guns from the streets, particularly illegal handguns.
So as counselors within our districts, if we find that, you know, there are people listening tonight that, you know, possibly are interested in, in contributing to this businesses, like you said, corporate sponsorships, uh, that needs to go directly through the mayor's office. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Uh, to his honor himself, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
It, um, have we reached out to the, to state rep? Cause I know Manny Guzman has posted on Facebook the availability of all this grant money opportunity. I'm not sure if this would be eligible for a potential grant from his office.
I cannot speak to that, counselor.
Okay. And then my, well, my second question, the, the areas that are being identified for the gun buyback program, are we strategically identifying certain locations that are, uh, people-friendly, warm, inviting, welcoming, safe, that people won't be intimidated even though?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely is. Sorry, go ahead, chief.
Go ahead, chief. Who is the chief?
He may be having some internet problems.
Okay, I didn't have to say that.
Do you have me back now that the wifi cut out here?
Right, chief.
Okay, we are looking at partnering with some faith-based, uh, uh, facilities in those, uh, neighborhoods. Um, and as to the strategic selection of them, yes, the, the locations of the general geographic locations in the city where we started looking at what organizations could assist us, um, that as you say, were kind of welcoming and, and non, uh, essentially don't look like police locations, um, I guess is the best way to put it. Um, we, we did that based off of some crime mapping and where we see, uh, some recent incidents involving firearms crimes.
Hi, this is Frank. I just want to confirm that we should know the locations in a day or two. We did have the locations reserved and set up, but because of the, the event that Reading High is doing next Saturday, we had to quickly change it and we just found out today. So we didn't want to premature, we think those locations are good, but we want to confirm. And there are two faith-based, uh, locations strategically in, in different geographic areas. So people will feel very safe. They're very safe places, very welcoming places. And, um, they, they, they're very suitable. We just, we wish we could have told you tonight, but we're still in the process. It's Monday. These faith-based, uh, organizations just coming off the Easter holy week and they're off today. So we hope to have, it's the next day or two. We want to reconfirm these two locations, but we believe they're very strategic and very welcoming to the community. So it should address those concerns.
Okay, um, any other comments? I have one or two. Go ahead, Johani.
One last, are, are we also working with the Reading School District? So just because I believe like school buildings are also like viable locations and there, I mean, I, I, you know, I wanted to mention, uh, there's a prince of the principal of Southern Middle School. Every Wednesday, I think from 4:30 to 6:30, he does this, um, uh, meal kits. He adopts a block. And he goes out, has, he has a, a crew of volunteers that go out into neighborhoods. They adopt the block. They're knocking on doors. They're providing meal kits. And then I, I think that's a good way also of spreading the word of what we're doing. And I'm not sure if there's a possible collable, collaboration with what he's doing every Wednesday, um, because he is a, a meeting with about a hundred or talking to about a hundred families, having a hundred conversations, et cetera. So just putting it out there.
Yeah, we, uh, our officers actually go out with them every week, um, to assist with that program. So it's certainly something that our officers can speak to while they're out with that, uh, program.
Thank you, chief.
All right, uh, Marcia, you had a comment?
Yeah, and I think that one of the, uh, important takeaways for the gun buyback is it's really just one component of a comprehensive plan. And we need to revisit what all those different components are and how they get phased in. Because we certainly have had some, uh, great dialogue at both the Olivets with the youth being involved and a lot of great community leaders that are pulling their weight to make things happen. And I think now we need to look at how these efforts complement each other. For instance, one of the things they were doing was setting up what they call voice boxes, boxes for people to put or youth or whoever to put information about things they were concerned about. So all these, uh, uh, components need to be coordinated. And I think you will get your greatest buy-in is if people in the grassroots level can help to be able to support, uh, what's happening here. And the sad reality of it is, and this is going to be my commentary, is we have way, way too many weapons that people are profiting from selling in this country. That is one of the reasons that we have such, uh, supply of weapons that it's unfortunate, but people who want to have weapons will find them. And people that want to sell them will make sure that they're getting them out on the streets. So I, you know, that's a bigger discussion, but I want to end with this. Is there anything that we can do at a legislative level that, as we did in the past, where we did pass some legislation about stolen weapons that then needed to be, uh, retooled because it was preempted at the state level? I think we need to explore what legislatively we can do too. And have that be part of the comprehensive plan.
All right, um, thank you, Marcia. Um, anyone else?
Uh, ca- council president, ju- just to, to share that there is some House bills, particularly House Bill 361, that's being proposed in Harrisburg that looks at local regulation of firearms. I'll be glad to share that with the body. Uh, it's currently in the House Judiciary Committee as of February 3rd. So there is a lot of legislation out there that is trying to empower cities to be able to provide some of these regulations. So I'll be glad to share that with the body. And what we could do as, as a group is maybe send letters of support, lobby our, our, our state representatives who are very supportive of this initiatives. Uh, but I'll be glad to share that. There's some legislation that's being discussed now. I can share that with everybody through email.
All right. So, um, I, I, again, uh, thank you everyone for your questions and chief, thank you for the, the gun buyback program. Uh, I see there's some community organizations trying to rise up and help the police in the different neighborhoods because that's really the key. Um, if, if there's not a series of police programs that are going to curb crime, it's going to be attitude and people taking over their neighborhoods block by block. And when they see things, report them. Um, people need to know that the gun buyback program, there are zero questions asked. Turn over a gun, you get compensated for it. And I hope it's successful and we'll, if it is, we'll find ways to find funding. While, while we have you on chief, I, I spent a lot of time up in Marcia's area. I noticed that the dirt bikes and the four-wheelers are coming back into play. Um, it's not an easy thing for police to pick around. They're not even kids, 25-year-old four-wheelers that are not licensed, not meant to be driven on the street and driving them all over. I'm hoping somewhere down the road we can, you know, establish a way of getting these people turned in and even anonymously rewarding people for doing so. I wish we had a mini bike buyback program. Um, of course, the thing is we lost a young man last summer. And, you know, I remember the family was devastated, but, uh, it hasn't changed the behaviors of a lot of people. Um, and I'm afraid one day some little kid's going to get killed by one of these bikes or one. It, it's going to happen. And it's probably going to happen on Cotton Street. I hate to say it, um, because the sidewalks are so narrow and there's so many kids. And they fly up and down there. For some reason, they pick the worst street in the city to do it on. And not that there's a good street, but, um, so I just wanted to make mention of that. So then the neighborhoods have to report these people, identify them, call the police, let them know where they're parking these bikes. You know, give the police at least a little bit of insight. They, they, we don't have the time to chase people out and to put all these expectations solely on the police department is unfair. And as a community, we've got to police our streets and help them. And I, I just wanted to reiterate that. Donna, you had a comment?
Yes, and dovetailing on that, Jeff, is we're getting into, finally into summer and hopefully into more normal circumstances. Um, one of the counters, of course, is as we approach the Fourth of July holiday and the other summer holidays is fireworks. Um, maybe there's something that we can be briefed on, updated on in terms of, um, both for the fire department and the police department dealing with, um, the situation of fireworks. Cause we know no matter what rules are cast, we're still going to have issues and how, how we're looking at, um, dealing with those, if there's a change. I don't know if that will be public information, parts public, parts not, but, um, I know people are already concerned about that. So.
Well, I'm going to.
Conversation we can have, Jeff, along with the dirt bikes. That would be good.
Yeah, well, I'm going to make a statement now. I mean, after last summer, I actually had to meet my daughter with my granddaughters in the car. She happened to be driving through the city and they were crying uncontrollably. They, 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 it was like a war zone.
Yes.
And the, the police in the front, they're doing all they can, but to thank our state legislators, haven't addressed this issue because it wasn't just Reading last year. It was all over the place. The fact for $6 million, they haven't corrected probably one of the biggest mistakes they've made in the last five years. And they make many. And I'm not running for state legislature, so I'm just telling you, you know, the fact that they haven't fixed it at that level, I'm not going to say anymore. I mean, it, they're putting so many lives at risk for nothing. And I don't, I don't know what they do all day, but they ought to be dealing with that issue head on. And I hope they hear me because no city should face that again. And that law has more than tenfold made our city worse in the Fourth of July. We can all agree upon that. And it needs to be, it needs to be removed, eradicated, and it should have been done by now. So, you know, I'm hoping the police and the fire department can do more, but we're asking them to take on a task. You know, that.
And I'm not being critical of them, Jeff. I'm just, I'm just asking of.
Oh, I know you're not, no, you're not.
I'm not being in any way, shape or form, I'm not being critical of them.
Well, I'm just telling them they are currently concerned that. I wasn't aware of that. They better hurry up. How's that? They got, you know, they got six weeks because soon people start stocking up on that stuff. And, uh, you know, I don't know why, I know, I don't know why it wasn't done by the end of August, quite honestly. But those are my comments. Any other comments?
Uh, ca- council president, I do know that our state representative Mark Rozzi and state senator Judy Swank has sponsored, uh, very, uh, uh, very good legislation in regards to our concerns. I believe that council reached out to the legislative body last year. And because the legislative session was finishing last year, they weren't able to put anything in to dock it. The dockets were getting cleared out. But the beginning of this legislative docket, Representative Rozzi and State Senator Judy Swank, uh, in the Senate has sponsored legislation to, to empower us to go back to making these things illegal. I'll be glad to share that. I had that legislation. I had the memos from the legislature. I'll send that to the body to see if we need to do something to help other legislators in the area to help us. So I'll send it out also.
Well, we appreciate your efforts. And again, anybody at the state level that doesn't support that, I'm not, I'm just going to reserve my words, but honestly, so, I mean, you're just impacting so many children and elderly people. The stupidity of that bill ever getting through is ridiculous. So those are my comments. Anybody else?
Uh, council president, I, I just have one, a bit of information to put out there. Um, it kind of weaves its way through all of this. Um, so it, illegal fireworks, if folks are stockpiling illegal fireworks, um, if there's individuals that know about the locations where individuals are holding guns, um, the dirt bikes, all these problems, um, they can get called into the police department, but they can also get called in anonymously, anonymously through Crime Alert Berks. Um, their phone number is 877-373-9913. And we've seen a lot of success partnering with them. Um, there's also ways that you can text information to them, file, uh.
Right, to alert Berks.
So.
Text, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a great system. It's helped us out a lot in the past.
Yeah. And, and, and it's not an easy job trying to chase all that down. And that's, you know, we, we, you hear me continuously try to reiterate that the community has got to step up and help out the police department. Oh, these things are going to get worse. Go ahead, Lucine.
So in hearing this conversation, um, it makes me think that through COVID too, you know, we have been trying to put out public service announcements, you know, reminders, uh, you know, to keep our community safe. Um, and I see an opportunity here, um, on the cusp of, you know, the season's changing and summer coming, anticipating some of what we're talking about. Uh, possibly as a city to continue and be, um, um, determined, uh, to put public service announcements out on, on a regular basis. public service announcements out on a regular basis, you know, whether it's fireworks, whether it's the motorbikes, whether it's the swimming, you know, the pool opening, continual COVID, you know, cautions. I think we cannot stop communicating as a city to our constituents. And the more frequently we do that, the more it's ingrained in our community. We have a very transient community. Everybody's very excited. There's a lot of COVID fatigue going out there. People are, you know, getting inoculated. Fourth of July is coming. People are thinking about the summer. I think the very least we can do is continue to be consistent so that we can constantly be reminding everybody what the rules are and how they are in place to keep our community a safe place.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everyone. Good luck with the gun, the gun buyback program and hopefully the city constituents will participate. If there's no other comment for public discussion this evening, does anybody have anything pressing? We are getting, well, I guess we're okay. We don't have a regular meeting here. Otherwise, we're going to go into an executive session. And the executive session is on a legal matter, correct, Fred? All right. If there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to ask Linda to take us off live stream and clear out the room so we can get into that specific matter.
Counsel President, in absence of the mayor and managing-